I will call this meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees to order. We do have a quorum and the meeting has been called duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. The first deal on our agenda is the Shack Committee Annual Report, School Health Advisory Council.
On page five you have an agenda item that lists the Shack. Under Texas Education Code Chapter 28.004, the district is supposed to have a Shack, an advisory council made up of school and local and community individuals to provide the Board of Trustees each year an update of what they've been working on. Today we have with us Dr. Danny Price. We're going to turn it over to him.
All right. Thank you. First off, I haven't extended lunch yet. That's very unusual. So, yeah, this is the end of about two years of getting to lead Shack, which has been exciting being a pediatrician and a dad of daddy's kids. I was so excited to get to be a part. Really care a lot for our kids here in Tyler, passionate for them. And there's no place where we get them all together on a place like in schools. So, this has been exciting. It's a foot pressure. You know, Shack is just Texas Legislature. It's getting more good. It's decided that every school district needs a panel of 51% or more parents, more than district staff to get together and kind of help come alongside, receive whatever the rules on that. Now, kind of like a lot of political things, you know, they came up with a good idea, but then far as pretty low on what they require. Basically, you know, have more parents, so that's there three, four times a year. And after three years go over, the school's health and wellness policy. So, you know, so not, pretty basic. There are a few other details, but those are kind of the basics of what you have to do. And those are Andy's slides here that I guess someone from the district, someone in Austin that said that we should check that. So, did that. You know, I think there, you know, I think we could do more as far as working together. I think long view is really good is that I went to them last year and speak with them and we kind of sent a lot of, you know, more, I think, buy-in from the district and working together to get things done. You know, this year was a little bit busy in that, you know, after some years of, you know, at least as long as I've been in Shack, you know, having administrative help from the district, that was taken this year. So that there's a bit, so I, you know, from a full-time volunteer and head nurse who also has a full-time job, you know, left is doing, you know, instead of webinars and fun things I had to do last year, you know, was doing email lists and, you know, attendance logs and things like that. So, I would hope that, you know, as I hand this off to, you know, the volunteer that I've sent in for next year, maybe we can get that administrative assistant help back, you know, from the district so he can spend time again, you know, in webinars and things where he can actually get some treatment, some real health issues and federal health issues, things that we worked on earlier before last. But, and I think there will be two new things. I think that even though we did review the health and wellness plan for the school this year, I think it's changing. It's likely it should be reviewed next year or the year after. And then the sex education curriculum is being changed. And so, I think that's still in process of being formed. You know, at this point, I don't hope there's been any, any plan for Shack to be involved or anything like that. Hopefully, you know, once that starts coming together, all, there'll be some progress there. That's obviously, a lot of parents are very interested and a lot of their kids are already on sex and it's a pretty big deal. But, yeah, I think this is a, it's a great setup. It's a great school district. It's got a wonderful head nurse. I can't say enough about her and the partnership and the hard work there. And it's looking forward to seeing all the next presentations for next year.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Dr. Price? Dr. Price, thanks for your service for the last two years. You mentioned somebody teed up to lead. Do you know, has that been decided who's leading the Shack?
It has. It's a man named Danny Lamont. And he is also recruiting his co-chair and successor. I was hoping to have that nailed down for today, but she's still discussing it with her husband. And it's probably somebody that a lot of y'all here at TIRM know. So hopefully they'll decide that she will be able to do it for next year too. So I'm excited about the lineup.
Good deal.
Again, appreciate it.
All right. Absolutely. Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the update there. Okay. We're moving on to the Tyler ISD Foundation Annual Report.
Y'all know our partners at the Tyler ISD Foundation. Their administrative director, is that your title?
I'm the executive director.
Executive director. That's right. They changed it.
That's right.
That was a big vote.
That's right.
That Reverend Hager nor myself or Don Farnell could vote on because we're ex officier.
True.
But y'all know Betsy Jones. As she's handing out her materials, we have been very appreciative of Betsy's leadership and what a boost she has provided to the Tyler ISD Foundation. And certainly we are excited about the, the great things that can come out of the TISD Foundation, Education Foundation for the future because of her leadership. Betsy?
Thank you guys very, very much. And before I even get started, I should say a huge thank you to each of you because y'all give so much time and service and leadership to our district. And I don't think there's ever been a better time to send our kids to go here in Tyler ISD. It's because of y'all's leadership and business. And thank you all so much for all you do. I know that most of you are familiar with the foundation, but I just thought I would spend about one minute kind of talking through what we're all about. And so this first slide really talks about our mission, which is to provide resources to inspire learning, enrich teaching, and enhance opportunities for district students. And the way that we kind of boil it all down in that we seek funds and want to grant those funds back in meaningful ways within TISD. And so this slide shows the six ways that we primarily seek funds, through individual donors, corporate sponsors, employee giving, grant writing, downing funds, and then we do special events in the shared support campaign. And then the traditional ways that we grant those funds are through TISD events and programs, scholarships, Nide Shining Stars, profession development, emergency grants, and then grants for creativity and financial support.
We don't have that.
Yes, I didn't.
That's okay.
You guys can open that. Okay. So then to kind of delve a little deeper into those results, just to share those with you, on the next page, I've just given you kind of how we did in terms of seeking funds. And so, a couple of things just to highlight. The good news is that all of the news is good. We increased our fundraising in every category this year, which was wonderful. We really increased the number of donors that we have for both an individual or corporate sponsorship perspective. The employee giving was up, which was wonderful. And then our BRIC campaign was quite successful, so we're going to do another one this fall. One of the other things I just wanted to point out is that the foundation this year moved to a two-year funding protocol. So all of the funds that we raised this year in 2018-19 that were unrestricted will actually serve to our operating budget for next year, which has been great because it's allowed a lot of stability. It's allowed for us to actually plan and budget how much we're going to do in each of those things and then fulfill those commitments instead of raising funds and spending funds in the same single year. So that's kind of a few things on our revenue sources. And then if you look at the next page where it has these little three boxes, this is how we spent those funds so far this year. As far as events and programs go, we did all of our normal, like this year we did convocation, teacher retirement, teacher of the year, TISD tailgate, which okay. And then we are considering for next year, getting involved with the Team One Tyler program, supporting or sponsoring the candidate as they get their master's degree, as well as the Tyler Ready Program in terms of the principal professional development. So those were two things that we're working with Laura on to try to sponsor and support those as well. Scholarships, this was a great year. Tim Local had a wonderful idea to raise funds for the signs at each of the two new bond projects and put those dollars into a scholarship program. And so we were able to grant several scholarships this year and will be able to do so next year as well. Nide Shining Stars was wonderful this year and TISD TV helped us out tremendously by filming and editing all those student videos, which allowed us to do some other grants. We did professional development grants, emergency grants, and Grants for Great Ideas this year was great. We had 36 applications for over $128,000 of funding requested, which is the most we've had in years. And then we were able to fund 21 grants across 18 campuses that should touch around 7,500 students. So we were so pleased about that. And then sometimes we have donors that have a specific heart for a campus or a particular initiative, and so we did several of those grants as well. John Tyler at Jones Elementary and then we're working on one at the Colwell. And so, the total giving that we've had to TISD so far this year has been $112,000. I love that. It's been great. It's been nicely several years as well. I'm not going to go into this in detail, but the data that you have back here, but this is just a comparison of where we've been over the past three years from an income and expense perspective that you're welcome to cruise at your leisure. And then the last page in your packet here is more of our balance sheet over the past five years. And I did this analysis back 20 years and the foundation has the strongest balance sheet that it's had in that time. And so, I think that with y'all's vision and leadership and our support, we can do some really amazing things together. So, don't have any questions for me about the foundation or anything you'd really like for us to focus on or do differently?
Did I hear you saying you're going to start up the BRIC campaign again in the fall?
Yes.
That's good.
We are. I received, you know, I had a deadline and then I had a week to let people call me afterward to order breaks, which they did. And then now I have a running list of everyone who kind of missed that initial window. And so, we're going to do it, I think, in August through October of this year so that we'll be able to have the bricks back and have the John Tyler installation in December and then we'll need one next summer.
Don, can we do a PSA or something on 19?
Okay.
Yes. And I'm hoping also, we did most of our communications this year online and through Word of Mouth. And so I'm going to try to have a flyer that goes on with every kid on a birthday at school and we'll do some more other ways to try to get word out.
Anybody else? We just appreciate everything y'all do.
Great work.
Yeah.
Gotta take it in good hands.
Thank you so much. Okay. Next is a legislative update.
Sunny die has occurred. We don't think we're going to have a special session. I said, notice I said "think," but apparently there's some plumber stuff going on down there. Yeah. So, yeah, they want it. So I don't think that's, they'll figure something else out on that. But, we're here today to kind of follow up on our discussions that we had two board meetings ago, I believe, about things that were going on in legislature now that we know some things have been firmed up, that we can talk a little bit more publicly about what we're doing to prepare for next year's budget along with some of the things that we have that we'd like to implement. So today we have with us Tasha Bjork and she's going to provide some numbers for y'all. I know y'all have been pretty interested in that. I've floated some of those things out to y'all sporadically throughout the session. But now that the big three had their press conference two weeks ago, House Bill III is actually awaiting signature on the governor's desk. It's happened. And so, we're able to provide y'all with some numbers and we're going to go through a little bit of a crash course of school finance 101 now that they've changed a lot of the formulas and how they're going about the distribution of those dollars to different parts of our state to serve the 5.4 million students in Texas, along with how the 18,000 students here in Tyler are going to be supported by House Bill III as well. This is just a, an opportunity for us to have an open dialogue in public about some of the things that are going on. So here we go.
Okay. This will be fun. Even if these numbers are just estimates and they may change a few things, not all of it's been totally from that, but I was going to just kind of give you an idea of what needs to change. You'll notice on the top line, the regular program allotment went up from, this is two columns, 1920 if we were, the law stayed the same, or 1920 for House Bill III. What they did is they missed the basic allotment, which is the amount we get through ADA from $5,140 to $6,160. So if we're at, and it's not our regular ADA, which is $16,750, it's the ADA after special ed and CTE. And so that's around $15,000. So you take that and multiply it by the difference and that's why we have an increase there. So then what happens, the rate, the special ed's next and none of those weights change. But because the basic allotment changed, those students are weighted anywhere from 1.7 to five times the basic allotment. We have some students that get $30,000 for us if they're here every day.
At your severe profound kiddos that we serve.
So these, these weights on special ed are 1.7 to 5. And whatever they get, that's what comes over to them. And that's why they're pulled out of the ADA for regular program allotment because they're more than the basic allotment. And then career technology is right under that. And they get 1.35 times the basic allotment. And, but what was new in this House Bill III on them is we get to add seventh and eighth grade. I don't know what that number's going to look like yet. So I was conservative and just put, I'm going to, I have no idea what it is. So that could go up.
And Tasha, I don't want to stop your momentum. So, board, you may ask, where could you spend money in career technology education in the middle schools? You could possibly look at some STEM opportunities there that we have at Moore. You could also look at some, the career cruising or, what do we call those classes now, Raleigh? Career explorations? Which one is it? It's one or the other. I can't remember which one it is. That we provide in the middle schools and we actually have a teacher dedicated to that at all five of our middle schools to teach those classes.
So for that one section, if they're in that class, we'll be able to get additional funding for that in the future. The, right under that, you'll notice the gift and the comp for the lot, it went away for the new year. It was a previous lottery. Now, the big change is in state comp ed. They changed the funding weight from .2 to minimum of .225. But you'll notice there's blocks, census blocks, one, two, three, four, five. Five is the most severe for most poverty and it will be weighted at .275. But we have no idea yet what these numbers will look like because the commissioner has to get a committee together to come up with the severity of the blocks. And then we have all our addresses in, geocoded. So once we know what each, where our addresses are and what block, we'll be able to be able to stop. But they're saying that could be a whole year. So we'll probably, I just went with minimum and we might get more. That may settle up. I don't know.
Let's pause on this. Board, do y'all have any questions about that methodology? Any clarification y'all need on how? Because this is brand new. Used to, a kid that was free reduced lunch or labeled economically disadvantaged got the same weight as the next one beside him or her. This is actually talking about tiers of poverty. In other words, there's some kids that barely qualify and there's kids that qualify eight times over. So what they're doing is, is they're going to actually take our data and identify how many kids are there and then that actually fall into these different blocks according to whatever the commissioner's rules are going to be. So, they're actually targeting these dollars at, at the students that really need it since our state is becoming more and more impoverished, at least our public schools are, and being able to do that. So Tyler ISD being 75% economically disadvantaged, we think that will be qualifying for some of these additional allotments. But, I will caution the public that Tyler poor may not be the same as Valley poor or the big urban poor. Y'all can, y'all can, now we've got that, don't get me wrong, but as far as a large group of them, we may not see the windfall that some of those other school systems may see because of the weights on these.
So basically, I went with the minimum.
What'd you say?
You went with the lowest, most conservative member.
Yes. Oh, yes. Because I have no idea what it is. But the way comp ed works is we, for all of those children, we have, we get the regular program allotment for them. That's up in regular program. Then we get additional .225 of the $6,160. So that's why it's rather large, 18,849. Now, we only have to spend 52% of that on comp ed.
How much?
Top 52%. CTE's 58%. Now, they've relaxed spending requirements for one year on the comp ed because it is so hard to, the way the law is right now, it's hard to code things there. Sometimes it's hard to find things that you can put in comp ed based on the strictness of the law. So they're going to relax it for a year because we're getting such a large increase. And then they'll probably have a few tweaks to it after that. But, that's where a lot of our increase is coming from, right there.
Dr. Crawford, you'd mentioned in the past, state comp ed funding as a source for extended year. If we were to significantly change the number of kids involved in summer, is that?
Yeah.
We pay for Rose City out of this department.
Yeah. It's really not so much getting the additional dollars in state comp ed as it is being compliant with what we're spending it on. And so that it's kind of a different, different way to have to attack that. It's great to have those dollars, but when they, you can't spend it on people, at least certain people.
Certain. In certain schools.
In certain schools. So it's, it's.
Right. They're non-titled schools.
Right. Even though they've got kids that are going to fall into those census tracks, you can't spend it on Jack or Owens, but even though they've got those kids there.
You can do some things like district wide things, but not.
Right. And that is a district wide.
Like as for teachers.
Rose City. Yeah.
But that's about it.
Of course. Stan, we can use this money on our summer camps. Are our summer camps doing what I call in-depth instruction for those students that move, need to move up to the next level? Or we're going to have another part to our summer camp where we're addressing the needs of those students that need that in-depth instruction, be it reading, English, math, et cetera?
Yeah. You asked two different questions there.
Right.
Yes, we are. I mean, you've had data in front of you that from Rose City Summer Camps that the summer slide is not occurring with the kids that do attend our R-C-E-S-C, Rose City Summer Camps. So yes, that is being the, what we'd like to do is have more. Now, I don't know if more inside of Rose City Summer Camps is the, is the ultimate fix-all as it is to extend the school year opportunities, like compulsory, to where this board would make a decision.
Well, I'm thinking more the, yes, compulsory where students must attend who need it.
Right. And so, you know, taking that task on is a very large project, but being able to attack that in smaller pockets is the way that that's going to have to occur over time. There is going to be dollars available for that, along with additional grant dollars out of, outside of what the allocations are going to be, the local school system. There's going to be grants that are going to be available at TEA for things such as extended school year, the 207 school year, and achievement pay to attract teachers to go to those campuses as well. So yeah, that's, that is part of the strategic six that we're going to be talking about. We introduced a couple of board meetings ago. That's what, that's kind of the next five years, things that we're going to be working on are those big six items.
Is transportation a consideration for students who are not able to walk to these schools where we have the summer camps? Is that something you can use, fly on board?
We do provide transportation right now to Rose City Summer Camps at Moore and at Three Lakes. Title I does pay for that. What we would like to see happen, and we'll get deeper into this, and I've met with Kevin East, Executive Director of the Mentoring Alliance, is to actually open up Hubbard and Bolter. And so you have the four quadrants of this, of the district covered to be able to do that. That'll, that'll assist with, especially at Bolter, locating a Rose City Summer Camp experience. It may not look exactly the same, but it will look obviously very similar to a portion of our city to where our risk load is the highest as far as the data goes on the census blocks, as far as where the, where the kids are living.
We're going to have to focus on things once we get it.
Yeah. But as far as transportation goes, being able to locate it in the four quadrants of our school system will assist that as well. As far as providing busing to those located, right now, we just do pickup hubs because we don't have as many drivers in the summer and there's not as many students that, that require transportation. So, and we may have to focus a little different methodology at some portions of our city to where parents can't do that. Even though we know they're located all over the city, they're, the Bolter program may have a little bit different feel to it.
I hope we'll look at that. Thank you.
Okay.
The next section in green is Bolling Wall, dyslexia and early autism. They changed the weights, they increased the weights on Bolling Wall and they added away, well, they didn't increase the regular Bolling Wall allotment, but they added away for dual language, .15. And then the second one after I did this, the non-lep and dual language, we don't have that. So I'm, so you wrote that out. And I, these numbers could change a little bit, but that's the additional funding for dual language, $724,000.
Tasha, we don't have non-lep kids in?
I thought, well.
I thought I had one.
Well, it qualifies under what the qualification rules are.
Okay.
Because they had given me some numbers first, but then they went and got it closer and decided now those aren't really qualified. So, and they, we base this on this year's numbers too. So I'm going to have to change it next year, but I thought that was the best, best way to do it. Okay. Dyslexia is a new allotment. We've never gotten that, although we've had to fund it.
Yeah, we have.
So, that'll help out some. They funded it just like Bolling Wall, .15.
Tasha, before you go, I know we kind of breezed through the GT funding, the allotment being taken away. Y'all realize, even though that the GT allotment was absorbed and just thrown in there, we're still going to serve our GT kids.
Right.
In fact, we were spending way more money than what they were allotting us to serve our GT kids. And there's one thing that backs that up. There is state law that says you must serve those students to a certain level. So, just because the allocation went away doesn't mean that you don't provide a high level of service to our GT students and we will continue to do so.
Well, sometimes they're like sort of the basic allotment.
Right. They just dumped it in the basic allotment.
Because you have to do it in regular.
Right.
Pretty much. The next one is the one that we're talking about is the early. The next one is the one that we're talking about is the early allotment. That's for preschool, preschool, full day for qualifying. So we did get funded on that.
It's $2 million, $2.4 million.
And we already have 10 of our, that we already paid for. So anyway, that's...
So this will be in addition to those 10?
Well, if we add 20 and the 10 and a half, that's about what's good. Okay. The next one is high school allotment. That went away. Basically, what we did with that, that was mainly for early college and any of our dual credit classes, that type of thing. But they've thrown that up in regular, so...
That won't cause a problem for our students, okay.
No, we still, it's regular.
Yeah. A lot of the stuff that you're hearing about today is just a recalibration of how they're allocating it to us, and in some cases to where we don't have to spend it, track them.
Right.
Yeah, the paperwork is going to be certainly a different thing as far as what we're reporting to, back to Austin. That was a...
Because we have the codes special, like AT, you have codes special.
Right. That's exactly right. So, so when we say GT went away and that high school allotment went away, it doesn't mean that those programs are going to be influenced. We still are going to be positive on our, what we're bringing home, or what they're sending to us.
Okay, the next one's in Green. We don't have that, so the teacher incentive allotment and mentor program allotment, they're going to be, I think it's going to be for a year, we'll have to apply or something. We don't know, they don't, have not told us anything about this yet.
Yeah, so the teacher incentive allotment, this is where in House Bill 3, you're hearing a lot about how merit pay and that they were only going to use STAR to determine that. What they did, they took that out of House Bill 3. They didn't say you, you couldn't use STAR. They just said that it wasn't going to be required in order to participate in this program. But you do have to apply for it, come up with a plan, apply for it to Austin to receive this, these, this money. So if you're going to do an achievement pay opportunity program, this is where the funding will be located, outside of what the, the bottom number, bottom lot numbers she's going to get to here in a minute.
Okay. The next is a new, we kind of just pretty much on this, but they gave us $9.72 per average daily attendance for a school safety allotment, which is around $163,000.
And that's to cover some of the new statute that's going to be coming down, that's going to require us to do certain things as far as school safety and security goes. You know, a lot of the, a lot of the attention was being given that we're going to help with, helping you with facilities and X, those types of things. And I don't know how much the 163 is going to help, even though we have done a lot of work already with the secured vestibules and fences.
And we have money built into the budget for it anyway, $250,000. So it's called a cell. And the new instruction facilities allotment, they put a little more money into that, and we will be applying for that, I believe, I've got a dollar check on it on the rule. But we may be able to apply for that for a year, if I'm tolerant, either this year or next year. Tim and I are going to make a call to Austin and see when we can apply. We did that for the middle schools and we received that in court. But I just don't know because we are kind of going to be in the building part of it. So I've got to see if we call, I... Was that a per ADA allotment? I know it's going to be...
Do you remember the middle school amount, how much we got?
Well, it was $200 per ADA for a year. And then if you had new ADA the next year, you got some out next year. It was $80,000.
Okay.
But they upped it for the rest. So I'm hoping to do it first. Okay, the transportation, I'm not sure exactly what's going on with that. They only had, we, we get around 1.6 million, but they said we only get a dollar per mile for regular, yeah. I don't know what's going to happen with the special year. I've asked that question and no one's going to answer it.
Well, everyone's asking that question, so they're going to wind up adjusting that.
Right. So that was a kind of big drop for us, but I thought it's not real helpful. The other, the dropout recovers for that to rise. We'll get a little money. We've been getting less without, but this is just a little extra. It's been in comp ed, but this is just a little extra. So then you come up with your total cost of tier one, and then they take out our local fund assignment. And this year, it's going to be 88 million. Last year it was 82 million. So our tax base went up quite a bit last year due to the addition of the hospital. And so we're taking a $6 million hit this year with that increase. And normally it's just like two million, but this year it's 6 million dollars. So...
Tasha, where's that number? In the yellow column, it looks like it says it's 88.
Well, that's, that's 1920 in the current law. I don't have 1819 out here. But in 1819, it was 88 million. So that gets subtracted off what the state's going to give. Because they're saying that's your tax rate. Because that went up, we get less than that.
And this is...
We're getting more, but it's a combination of the net. It's a net. If we had not had that big thing and say this, if we had just had a regular year and this were 85 million, we'd be up another 3 million more. And I feel like that's part of why the legislative budget for numbers and my numbers are different because of that.
That's a portion of it.
Right.
But we also, Tasha, when we were debating this and planning for this presentation, we also said that we wouldn't have had that money for this year.
Right.
To be able to, we would have been able to do some things, but it wouldn't have been available for us. So it was going to catch up to us some way. This was actually, I think, a good year for that to catch up.
It was because it is. See, this, they went to current year values. So we'll no longer have to hear lag, which is hard for me because I don't know how to calculate what this is. I just did a pro rata based on previous years, what the state assigns our value versus what our tax code values are. So I just looked at a couple of years in this state percentage. And, but because our, which I'll get to in a minute, our tax rate ever slowing down, it stayed pretty flat, whereas normally this would have gone up another 2 or 3 million. But we're staying flat because our tax rate is going to go down, which is on the next So our tax rate is going to go from a dollar per, it's compressed down to 93 cents.
97 cents.
And when we add 4 cents...
93, and then add 4 back up.
Going back. Yeah.
Say that again? Yeah.
Well, they're compresses to 93 cents. Okay? And then we can add 4 back. I don't know, you know, that all this, I'm sure later we have to.
Yeah, the 4 pennies.
Yeah, they're golden pennies.
Is that, okay. Golden pennies and copper pennies.
We don't have copper.
We don't have copper pennies.
We had more than 4. We had students here Tuesday, they go, see how that's going down? Well, we had more pennies, but then also the yield went down from $127 to $99. So we lost a lot of money there. We gained up top, but lost once we get down to our tax rate. So then we come up with a total, oh, but this was lost to staff allotment.
Yeah, I'm looking at that.
That's back from when we had to give teachers raises back like hours.
It was before...
Eight years.
Yeah.
And I think, and this is something I have to report on every single month.
Was it before 2011? It was.
Or that, it might have been that year that we had to...
Yeah, we got, the, the 5 billion was cut that year.
Yeah.
But I won't say it was before that. I won't say it was like 2009, maybe 10 years ago.
And so every month I have to report on that.
Because we gave, gave everybody raises, then we came back and had to cut a bunch of that.
But they gave us this little amount every year that kind of helped free that. So we don't have that anymore, but I, we don't have to report on it anymore. There are kind of lessons and things we have to use them on. So basically, our state funding at the bottom is going to be 55, 8, and it would have been 41, 7. Now, we've got to turn the pages, though.
That sounded like letdown.
Because our tax rate's going down 98 million to 91 million. So I'm there. What we're going to receive in taxes and state funding is around 148 million, or 147. Don't look at this number, though, that's what we would have got. Our funding this year for 1819 was 139 million. So we're realizing about 8 to 8.5 million.
Yeah. We're a little ambiguous about that because of some of the things we talked about earlier in this presentation with the weights assigned to the state comp ed kids. That'll, that'll increase.
I went early concerning it.
Yeah.
So we'll see what happens on that. Now, the fun part to me is the next page, not fun.
Am I not fun yet?
Because I think it's, a lot of others may be urged for this. When they do the press conference, they said every teacher should realize about a $4,000 overage or something. Isn't that what he said that day?
I don't think you...
The benefits are salary package.
Right.
Okay. So the way this works is we have to take our average, our average daily attendance and our change in revenue. Now, with what the legislative board would say, it's probably going to be a little higher than that. And we have to get 30% of that as compensation increases for teachers, nurses, counselors. We don't have law burden anymore.
We have MTSs.
Right.
Media, Media Technologies, Technology Services.
They're not charged to pay anymore, they're on paper. And so on this teacher, nurse, and not student, you have to differentiate if they have more than 5 years or less than 5 years. And so what they're estimating, if we did a 15% differentiation, as a teacher raises your other 6 years, would be around 2, 2200. And less than 6 would be 60. That's nowhere near what...
No, man, it's not.
Now, now with, with the newspaper in the room, and this, this is the, this is the board that we're talking to, this is the floor, okay? So as we go out and put stuff in ink or by gigabytes, this is just the floor that we're talking about here. This is what, what is required from statute for that. Now, what we come back and recommend for y'all to consider, and then what y'all direct us to, to go forward with is, will be a different number. We've already talked about that, but we wanted to put out here today, per statute with the formulas that we, that we, that we've been provided here.
From the state.
From the state. This is the floor. And there is a differentiation across the state on everybody's floor.
Right.
What they're requiring, so...
Right. We'll go...
We feel we will come back to y'all with a higher number.
Right.
But when you start talking about neighboring districts, their floor may look different than ours as far as what they're required to give. There, there is a chance, because there's no equity in this, y'all. There's a chance that our floor, that, there's no doubt that there's going to be people below us on their floor of what they're required to give per statute, and there's going to be people that are above us. And a lot of that also has to do, has to do with the, the state requirements for minimum pay.
Yes. We have some levels that aren't at the new minimum.
Yeah. That will have to boost up, so...
Right. I think there's 15% not at the new state.
Yeah.
We've always been way above it now, so...
So with the explanation that'll be given, they'll understand this is not just some number we're pulling out of a, at?
No, it's calculated.
Right.
And on your seat, if I don't have it there, it's around 2.5 million for teachers and 825 for other registered, non-administrative.
Tasha, so of the 8.5 million increase, 3.3 at a minimum has to go to personnel costs.
The second category is may.
May. So the 825 for non-teachers is a may. The must is the 75% for teachers.
Right. And this may does not include administration. Okay, the, the next page is just kind of a digital, kind of a sample. It, it has a million dollars in it, so like you're talking to that way up. So of this 70%, you've got to give other registered administrators out of 70%. This is for your teachers, counselors, nurses, any of them in the range. So this, on this first block right here with the three areas, you can go a mid-point on 70, other compensation, 70. And then this, the second one's the employee group 2. And then the 70% of that part up there, you have to come out of that. And you have your administrators and then your part-time employees, bus drivers, these guys. Those are just here with capital.
So your elevator, you know, talking point is, we have, we, we were required to dedicate 30% towards compensation increases of the new dollars that we got. Of that 30%, 75% of it has to go to teachers, to counselors, to nurses. The other 30% may be provided to the A, all the others, the ATOs, right? Okay.
And administrators and part-time.
And then administrators and part-time employees are outside of that 70%. Or, excuse me, outside of the 30%.
Mm-hmm.
Y'all got that?
Uh-huh.
Okay, we're going to have a quiz on that later on about that.
We're going to have, we're, we're going to have several, we're going to have a meeting to start working on this and try to get some options.
Better do it quick.
So of, of the, the new money we're getting, you know, we are getting some new money. But a lot of that is tied to mandatory spending, you know, in some, so of the new more money we're getting, do the mandates kind of offset or prohibit us to, from doing anything that we would have initially planned on doing with this new money? If that makes any sense?
We'll get some money.
Yeah. We're still going to have some leftover to attack what we want to attack here in Tyler ISD.
Absolutely.
All right.
Yeah. Pretty, we feel pretty good about it. It's not the, it's not the 16 million that Mo Kasey and Associates first projected for us. You're like, woo! It's not the 10 million that the Legislative Budget Board predicted, but it is close. And it'll creep up a little bit closer to that $10 million number once we plug in some of the formulas here. Two things I do want to bring up is, that I think are relatable to our presentation today. And Tasha can expand upon. We did something... We did something pretty cool, not, you know, about, about the time Tasha was here, when Tim Lovett came in. That's point oh-three. That's three cents of our, of our tax rate is already dedicated to preventative maintenance. There's not a whole lot of school systems in the state that, that, that do that. It's a very conservative way of making sure that we're not sinking debt into roof repair, air conditioning repair. We don't buy buses with debt. There's a lot of school systems that do buy buses with debt. We have not bought technology, um, you know, by taking on additional notes or whatever. So I think that that's something that we can champion in Tyler ISD of that, that three cents already is dedicated towards that. Um, the other thing I'll talk about is, I, we're self-funded. And, and we have a, we'll, we'll release a side-by-side of what that looks like for this coming year. Us compared to districts that are insured by the Texas, the teacher retirement system, play the active care. And I'm going to tell you, Board.
Their raise is going to go.
Their raise has a chance to not be realized.
So it could be eaten up by insurance.
Yeah. If you participate, if you participate with us, I think we have over two thousand people in our system.
Going up a little bit on that.
I know, but I think we have two thousand people in our system that accounts the staff and then their spouses and their, their, their children. If you participate with us as far as your health care goes, you're going to realize a significant increase as compared to your peers and other school systems that don't participate on a self-funded plan.
It is, uh, it's safe.
So we'll, we'll be sure to communicate to that to y'all. Um, I've got that on my desktop right now, but, but.
I was going to.
When we release that, we'll do that.
Do I? Maybe, um, with the new rates, and I'll do a side-by-side, so.
Tasha, this is, um, good work trying to see through the fog of Austin. I know some of the provisions impacted the second year of the biennium, tax rates changing. Have you, do you even have a sense for directionally whether the next year is better? Is it the same or?
It's supposed to be better on our tax rate, I still think, I do. In other words, it's.
Yes.
Yes.
With no, no pennies. I mean, the, we're already accessing those pennies, it would be a six cents further.
So, but the funding will be two to three million more?
They're saying two to three million more, but that was the LBB.
Oh, yeah.
Projection. It could be a little bit less than that.
Yeah.
Um, and I want to caution everyone, I, I mean, we've had some discussions among superintendents and the organizations I'm, I'm, I'm a member of. We have to be cognizant in how we do this because the way that it is being funded, y'all paid attention to the legislative session as much as I did. The way this is being funded is driven off of our economy. There is no, there's no mechanisms in place for this to be, even statutorily, to, to extend past this biennium. So we've considered, do we allocate these, this, this raise if we're allowed? I don't know if we're even allowed through a stipend. Because if we get married to this, I'm not trying to be doom and gloom on this, but if we get married to this, um, now, in other words, it gets put into your salary schedule and it's not done through a stipend, you're married forever to that. And what you're going to have to consider, if we get, if we have to experience what we had to experience in 2011, if we took on a downturn, we're not talking about just alleviating a stipend. We're talking about having to cut positions and consider other things that are, that, that we may not want to consider.
Well, I think what's.
Reduction in force type stuff.
What some schools are doing is for the basic, they're saying everybody gets this basic. And then a longevity for the six and nine, six years and nine. So that, I mean, we would all do the basic raise anyway. Maybe a little higher than our normal fifteen hundred. But then for the longevity, you give a certain dollar amount, say five or six hundred more than what you're giving them. That zero and a five for teachers. That's what some schools are doing. Cause then it's out there where if you have to pull it back.
So to make sure I understand, you're saying that if this goes into salary, then we'll stuck with it for the subsequent years? But if it is put in a stipend, that's different?
Yeah, if they reduce the, if the state reduces what they're, what they're committing to. And a lot of the tax compression, a lot of the way they're redesigning this, a lot of the way they've, they're doing, constructing these formulas or the methodology behind this is, they're trying to take ownership of more of, of funding public ed because it had gotten to the point where it was thirty, seventy out of balance. I don't know what it is right now. There's some that are saying it's half. I don't know what we're at right now, you know?
Actually, we're, we're more, we have to work.
Right.
Ninety-sixty.
Yeah. We're still getting a lot of it from local, but it's starting to go back to, shift back the other way again. Again, I, I think there's been some code words that's been put out there in the press from the Comp Trainers Office, from, from some of the other designers of, of this, is that how are we going to fund this past this biennium? And, or biennium? Is it going to span biennium or not? And that'll be something that we'll have to figure out in the future.
The differentiation factor of fifteen percent, that's.
That's not a, you could leave whatever you want.
Yeah.
That's where I said some people are just giving us stuff in terms of longevity.
Do you have a sense directionally whether we're likely to have more differentiation for longevity or less than this fifteen percent? Or are you too, is it too early?
I don't know, but I was just going to tell you, we have six hundred and seven without teachers, the zero and a five, and we have six hundred and thirty that are over. But, so we'll have to figure that out and actually what we're going to be able to do. I'll have to work that out once we come up with some ideas. We're going to have a name to help that.
This, this agenda was set before we had any of this information, before we were able to start plugging anything.
Right, I've been working on this since Monday.
Yeah, that's right. So, so we were technically supposed to be off Monday, but Tasha, Mr. Sanchez and myself, we actually worked Monday because we had to prepare for this. We attended a meeting in regard to this, uh, with other school systems as well. But Tasha's been throwing numbers in under the pressure that we already put this agenda out there. And so she did a pretty good job of this. Yeah. So this is early, but we wanted to make sure at least provide y'all with what the, what the floor is, what the base is. Uh, and, and what we, if we just had to provide that, that's what y'all could consider, but then we'll also be creative in trying to, um, go above that.
So the taxpayers are getting a decrease.
Yes.
School districts getting an increase and teachers.
Whoa, 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 whoa. School finance is being reformed and the taxpayers, because of the great work of the legislature, are, um, it's not going to be skyrocketing, it's going to be under control.
Your values can still go up.
Your values can still go up. But as far as what the school system is allowed to tax you upon, um, it will not be as exponential as it has been. So I don't know about a cut. A cut to me would be that they're going to cut you a check, and I don't think that's going to happen.
And the two point five percent cap.
Seems sustainable, is all I'm going to say.
That takes effect at 2021. The two point five percent tax.
Yeah.
Cap or increased cap is 2021.
That's what the press was telling me it was. Cause I was worried about that this year, so now that's twenty-one.
Yeah, and I think that's a kick the can down the road type of deal.
Right, I don't know.
That they may have to revisit this in the eighty-seventh legislature. And I, and I, you know, I appreciate, I really do. Matt was involved on the House side with a lot of this, and there's others that are getting accolades. And certainly Dan Huberty, who's been fighting for this, deserves a pat on the back, the Speaker as well. And then Larry Taylor over on the Senate side, uh, did a, did a good job of fighting for us as well. I know people are concerned about the effective tax rate, but I hope that, that our community realizes that we already dedicate point, or, excuse me, three cents of our, of what is provided us to make sure they take care of our facilities out of the M and O side. I think that's a big talking point for us. I guess we could defer that maintenance and just say, we're not going to do that anymore, and, but I don't think that's a wise thing.
How about like any school around us will go lower than that because of the, just what we have to do with the races? Cause some schools are having, they're having to go up to the minimum salary scale and give some. So they're in.
Yeah, there's a little bit of.
They're having to use all their money on races and so on. So it, we are fortunate in that we have some provisions that we can spend.
Yeah, and one other thing, we're, we're, I'm just kind of doing half, I'm halfway studying is, you know, whenever, in, in 2005 or 2006, whenever they went to the, they, when they went to the new, the new way of, of your, of tag, where a dollar four was the highest you could go before you went up, um, we were operating at a very conservative level back then. In fact, lower than the maximum tax rate that was allowable by then, which was a dollar fifty. And I think we were at a dollar forty-seven.
We were at a dollar forty-two.
Forty-two. And so when they switched everything over, we were penalized for being so conservative at that time. And so we didn't even get to maximize all of that, all of those cents for the longest of time.
Just two years ago.
Because of formula. They helped us two years ago. So, um, we're going to continue to do it in that, in that manner and protect the taxpayers' dollars. Um, but at the same time, we have a school system to run and, and teachers to hire. And, and thankful for the legislature for working on this.
Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments for Tasha? Okay. Next up is strategic initiatives.
Yeah, we'll kind of roll into that real quick. We don't have to spend a lot of time on this, but just, Mr. Washington, you asked, you know, are we going to have enough funding, enough revenue there to be able to do some of the other things that we would like to accomplish? And the answer is yes. And some of, just a reminder, some of the things that the Board, um, would need to consider down the road. One is our, our Tyler Reed's initiative to where we're really working on the phonics and whatnot. Um, you know, we were able to, to provide something to the Board, uh, this last time we, we purchased Voyager. Um, so we were already planning for that anyways, we were going to have enough money to do what we think we need to do as far as improving our tier one instruction in the classroom across the board as it pertains, especially as it pertains to phonics instruction and literacy. I'll save that one for last. The other one, uh, that we'll need to consider down the road is, is turnaround schools. Um, we're in pretty good shape as far as the penalty of improvement required, or whatever you want to call it. We feel good about the data, early data that has come in. You'll get a presentation at the July, or excuse me, the June Board Regular Meeting here on the EOC performance, cause that is official, and the CCMR, the College Career Military Readiness Projections, uh, as far as our high schools go and some of our middle schools as well.
That's correct.
Um, so we're waiting, we're waiting that, June 12th, I believe, uh, we actually get our elementary data in. Uh, but it will be unofficial. And so we, we like to get those things tidied up before we release any of that. Um, so that will be something we'll need to consider down the road with some of the additional dollars that we have if we ever need to turn around a school. The other thing is the teacher effectiveness. Uh, teacher effectiveness in compensation and, and designing a system that, that does award achievement. And, and, and I always say this, in Dallas, they have the ACE schools, which stands for what, Mr. Jones?
Accelerated.
Campus Excellence.
Exactly.
There you go. We'll come up with a different nickname, I'm sure. That's their turnaround model. And then TEI is Teacher Effectiveness Indices. So our philosophy is you have to have TEI before you get to ACE. In other words, you have to have teacher effectiveness in whatever program you're going to have in place there to identify who those turnaround type teachers are, how you're going to pay them, how you're going to reward them, before you can get to those, that turnaround school model. So we'll be working on systems in place for y'all, uh, as we go forward. Does a, does a campus have to be improvement required in order for us to, to bring a turnaround model to y'all? But we can have years of date. In other words, does it have to be an F or even a D? No. If there is a need in a certain part of our school system, uh, we will bring a recommendation to y'all for consideration. In other words, if we need a campus or a couple or three campuses to consider a two-hundred-and-seven-day school year, what does that plan look like? Um, I've set a deadline to our staff for October for that, okay? While still working on the teacher effectiveness models. We've got partnerships right now with a group called, what's that group called that you're working with, Ron? Multiple Measures? Working Group?
Yeah, the best, I can't think of what the, the BEST stands for, but it is multiple measures, uh, that they're looking at for determining TEI.
Yeah, the effectiveness of, of, of instruction. So it's, that's, that's a group out of Dallas. Dallas and Richardson and some others are, are involved in that, so we're really learning from that. We're not going to Dallasize what we're doing, but we certainly can learn a lot from them as we go forward in there. Uh, we do have our Pathfinder Program, they're still alive and kicking. Uh, hadn't talked about it in a while. And so some of the opportunities that we may have for enhancement within the Pathfinder will, will come out of some of the additional dollars, or at least y'all can consider that. One of that being the, the, the expansion of Rose City Summer Camps. That is really a choice program to, to go to that. I've met with, with Kevin already, again, I, I've stated that earlier, Mr. East, excuse me, uh, last week, and we are excited about the opportunities that may wind up being provided for the addition of two, uh, two locations. Rose City Summer Camps wants to, to add Hubbard. I told them they can't add Hubbard without Vaulter. So we're going to try to pull off a miracle and, and, and get the four locations over two overnight. Uh, possibly as early as next year. If not next year, then I do want to see what we can do about opening Vaulter before we open Hubbard. So, uh, I think we're going to be in good shape there. Uh, the last thing is pre-K. Um, I've been very coy about that, about whether or not we can, um, offer this, uh, part of the funding. Um, you know, as we got down to the waning, the waning weeks of the legislative session, we were, we were really, um, concerned that the legislative session may not provide additional dollars, that it was all going to be into salaries. And, um, we're going to be able to afford pre-K without having to dip in any type of fund balance and whatnot, so. We'll actually have an action item for y'all at the, um, at the June meeting, uh, Monday week, that'll, that'll ask y'all for us to initiate, initiate pre-K in Tyler ISD. Uh, at our, at sixteen of our seventeen elementary campuses, Caldwell being the exception, since it is a magnet school.
Timeline on that, are you talking about for this, this coming year?
Yes.
Implementing it?
Yes. Yep. So we will, we will push pretty hard right now to go ahead and start getting enrollment figures up. We've done a little bit of that already, and we're going to push pretty hard now to make sure that we can, uh, have that initialized.
I, I would like to talk with you about that, but I'll, I'll.
Okay, so we got Tyler Reed's, turnaround schools, Pathfinder and pre-K, teacher effectiveness.
Teacher effectiveness.
And safety.
And safety, and the safety. I'll left that for last. There is going to be some new statute come, uh, as far as that goes. Some of the things we've kind of already got in place will be more formalized and required from the, uh, from, from statute. Especially ma, much like you see Shack now, you will have a safety and, and security advisory group that is to present to the Board, I can't remember if it's twice a year or four times a year. We've already got that programmed into your, um, Board Monitoring Calendar, so that'll be a, an easy slide-in for that. It won't be something that's that awkward. But they are requiring more engagement, uh, from that. There are going to be some, some other mental health requirements, um, that we will need to consider additional funding targeting towards that. I don't know if that's going to be personnel or services or curriculum. Um, we'll have to take a look at that once it gets, uh, signed and pushed out to the school systems, uh, for interpretation as well. So that'll be something of, of interest that we need to keep an eye on as well, uh, with our sixth strategic initiative, which we're going to call the Big Six here inside this room. I don't know what y'all want to call it. We'll be very formal and keep calling it Strategic Initiative at the Board meetings. Ron Jones is the gatekeeper, the Chief of Staff is the gatekeeper of the Big Six, in case y'all were looking for a, uh, an innovative. case y'all were looking for a, an innovative or administrative contact, his eyes are really big over there.
They are real big.
But he's kind of the internal guy to keep everybody organized and in line to meet deadlines as we go forward, as we have some, a lot of people working on these initiatives here.
Okay. In Miami, questions or comments?
The extra funding available for merit pay or incentive pay for teachers, obviously we don't know the rules for how to access that money. Do you anticipate that our experience with our current evaluation system and this partnership with the group in Dallas, you think we're going to be able to access that money on time, or do you think we're going to be?
For this year? I think it'll be another year.
Another year.
Uh-huh. I think it'll be another year, not because I don't want to do, would not want to bring that, it's just, one, I do think that we could probably do some, we could potentially do some within the current allotment that they've given us, if we chose to do that. If y'all wanted that, we could come back with a plan, we could do that. And then there's going to be this other pot of money that I think you can access through TEA as well. It's just before we get, we got to get to the raises first, because that is a mandated deal. And once we get there and we see how much money that y'all are comfortable providing for compensation, what's left of that and how y'all would like to allocate that is something we'll need to get advisement from y'all to plan for.
Dr. Crawford, when you come to us about your pre-K program, will you talk to us about the impact that it will have on any existing programs?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Okay. And what happens to those existing programs? Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Well, that was a very informative session. I guess we're going to go into executive session now. Do we have any action to follow?
No, there is a, we used a template, that action on the Owens Principle, that's, take that off of there. I don't want to freak everybody out. So there is no action after that.
To hold over from a previous.
That's right, it was just a template from another workshop, or another Board meeting. It's okay.
Okay.
Good deal. That happens, because there's a lot on there.
It does. Okay.